Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just because this is a hybrid meeting here, just a reminder of a couple of different rules. Because of the pandemic here, we are providing the opportunity for those to quarantine, to join the meeting virtually. So we do have Bryce LeBrun playing, Mr. Chair, joining us virtually tonight. And just as a roll call, Mr. Chair, can you announce who is present at the meeting in person?
Yes, we could do that. We have Commissioner Peters, Commissioner Hallberg, Commissioner Romans, Commissioner Taiken, Commissioner Matsky, Commissioner Messina, Justin Fortney.
Okay, thank you very much.
And Commissioner LeBrun. I can't see him up on the screen, but I assume he's there.
Yep, he's here. I can see him. So, yeah, the first order of business here is hold of office. We're pleased to welcome Bryce LeBrun as our Planning Commissioner here. So administer the hold of office to Bryce here virtually. So Bryce, if you could repeat after me. I, Bryce LeBrun.
I, Bryce LeBrun.
Do affirm.
Do affirm.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And the Charter and Ordances.
And the Charter and Ordances.
Of the City of Hastings.
Of the City of Hastings.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the Planning Commissioner.
The duties of the Planning Commissioner.
For the City of Hastings.
For the City of Hastings.
Counties of Dakota and Washington.
Counties of Dakota and Washington.
And State of Minnesota.
And State of Minnesota.
According to the best of my ability and understanding.
According to the best of my ability and understanding.
Well, thank you very much, Bryce. Welcome aboard, our official.
Welcome, Bryce.
Welcome.
All right, next up is election of Chair and Vice Chair.
Yeah, and Commissioners, I'll give a little background on this. Annually, we elect a chair and a vice chair position for the Commission to serve all the year. All Commissioners that have served at least one year under the Commission are eligible to serve, so any Commissioner can serve, but for Mr. LeBrun, because he's been a Commissioner for one minute now. Nominations and seconds may be made by any Commissioner. The nominations for Chair and Vice Chair may be made as a single motion or as a combined motion. And in 2021, Gino Vasilevsky has served as Chair and Kyle Rome has served as Vice Chair, so I will open it up to the floor.
Okay, thanks. Commissioner Matsky?
I make a motion that we keep the Chair and Vice Chair the same for 2022.
Okay, Commissioner Matsky makes a motion to keep the Chair and Vice Chair the same. Second?
Second.
Commissioner Hallberg? All right, any further discussion? All right, we got to do a roll call, I assume?
I was just going to put that as a reminder, yes.
Yep, all right, so we'll do a roll call real quick here. Commissioner Taiken?
Aye.
Commissioner Matsky?
Aye.
Commissioner Peters?
Aye.
Commissioner Hallberg?
Aye.
Commissioner Romans?
Aye.
Commissioner LeBrun?
Aye.
And aye. And that motion carries. And that was for both, so thank you. All right. Approval of the minutes, November 22nd, 2021, regular meeting. Any changes, corrections? If none, we will consider those minutes to be approved. Okay, minutes are approved. We have no public hearings. Next is other actions. First one is the NJS Development Conformance of Hastings Downtown Redevelopment Area and Tax Increment Finance, TIF District Number Nine to the Comprehensive Plan. And I believe John is doing this one.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, Planning Commissioner. So before you deny that we have a resolution to find conformance with TIF District Number Nine with the General Plan. I'll explain what the heck that is here in a moment. The Tax Increment Financing District is a tool that will be used to finance development on various properties within town. There's a financial assessment on that that is not part of the Planning Commission's purview tonight. What we're looking at is really the conformance of what this would achieve with the General Plan or the plans that we have set up for the city. So a little background on this project here, we have two things we're looking at. We're looking at Hastings.
Downtown.
Redevelopment area, this Development District Number One, which is generally an
area downtown. Which stretches from Spring Street to the railroad tracks, from the river down to about Fifth Street or so. These are, this is an area in which we can create new tax increment finance districts. And tax increment district number nine is the new district we are creating. This new district encompasses a few properties, about three or four properties related to the NJS stencil development, which we'll talk about briefly in a moment, as well as the Block 16 Red River Corridor parking lot just to the north of it. And then what we commonly refer to as Block One, which is the art space block and the vacant properties just to the north of that. That is the new district that we're creating within this Development District Number One here. Little background on the project itself. We are looking at a proposal to build a around 87 to 89 unit apartment building, NJS Development Stencil Group is proposing that at the northwest corner of Fourth and Bailey Street. This is a piece of property that is owned by Hedra and is subject to a purchase agreement. The purchase agreement states that if you secure land use approval, land use approvals through Planning Commission, the Council, get your financing in order, then we would sell the property for this project. We've held this project property for a long time. The property was originally purchased by the HRA Hedra's predecessor in 2006. It was formerly the UBC lumber site. So the TIF District includes this NJS site along with those other two sites, as I mentioned. With the TIF District itself, the City Council will hold a public hearing on the TIF District on February 22nd. That's something they're required to do by state law. We also have been working with our financial advisor, Northland, to look at the request for TIF and to take a look at what we're going to be offering for TIF on it and have a separate TIF agreement. Again, the mechanisms of TIF is not what we're looking at tonight. We're looking at is the conformance of the plan to it. So give a little bit of explanation in the packet here about what a redevelopment plan is in TIF. Essentially, TIF takes the difference between the existing taxes paid on a property and the improved value taxes that increment or difference is used to help finance a portion of that project. Proposing is a 26-year district and then looking at pledging a portion of that district towards this development. So what we're looking at here is conformance with general plan. So when we look at general plans, we're looking at a few different things. Zoning code, comprehensive plan, our Heart of Hastings redevelopment plan, and then as well as our downtown property study. So looking at these plans and how this project fits within it, property is zone DC Downtown Core, the use for this apartment building and the density are permitted under that district. So that does conform with the zoning. Comprehensive plan conforms with that as well. It's consistent with the comprehensive plan. We just recently had an amendment to create a mixed-use high residential district, which this would fit within, fits within those density limits. Also, within the plan, we, it calls out the downtown redevelopment district, that larger tool for creating TIF as a way to encourage redevelopment within the downtown neighborhood. And future land use objectives encourage growth by investing in established areas in developing vacant land. And when we look at development within the downtown, looking at things that are compact and linked to existing development. So we find that this plan would be consistent with that. We've also have the Heart of Hastings Plan. Although this plan now is nearly 20 years old, it has provided great guidance for downtown and is still used today. The plan encourages the use of financial incentives to promote redevelopment such as TIF. It also calls out specifically Bailey Street Parkway creation, what was done the last couple of years, enhanced trail improvements, and that these should serve as a catalyst for redevelopment of the former UBC site. So we're following through on that Heart of Hastings Plan. Hedra also prepared a downtown property study in 2020, reviewing different properties that they owned and the development options that might be, might be coming forward for that, what these developments could bear. In that plan, development of Townhome Housing Project was contemplated for the same. While this proposed development for apartment units is of greater quantity than that identified under the proposed development plan in the land use study, this is consistent with the overall goal of providing additional apartment units within the downtown. In looking at that study, we acknowledged that the market forces would be a driver in determining specific development types. It was something where we could provide developers with ideas of what might work on a specific site here. So that's what we have before you tonight. Attached to the year report is also a resolution. This is, I know, a little bit unusual for Planning Commission for us to adopt resolutions, but the state statutes related to TIF districts require us to do these findings within the resolution. So I can stand for any questions that you may have. The action tonight that we're requesting is to approve the resolution in the packet. Thank you.
All right, thank you, John. Commissioners, any questions? Nope. If there are none, we'll go ahead and entertain a motion.
Chair?
Commissioner Taiken?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll make a motion that we approve the resolution number PC 2002-2-01.
All right, motion to approve. Commissioner Taiken, do you have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Hallberg, second. Any further discussion? If not, we will take a roll. Commissioner Taiken?
Aye.
Commissioner Matsky?
Aye.
Commissioner Peters?
Aye.
Commissioner Hallberg?
Aye.
Commissioner Romans?
Aye.
And Commissioner LeBrun?
Aye.
And Commissioner Messina, aye. And that motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next up is parking regulations for apartments, discussing potential changes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, tonight, not a public hearing, not an official ordinance amendment, but really more of a discussion on a future amendment that could come forward. We're looking at is the parking requirements for apartments and the discussion of a potential ordinance to modify those minimum parking requirements. Right now, under the zoning code, we have parking requirements established for various uses under 15509. They go through everything from retail and office to restaurants. When we take a look at residential, all single-family, duplex, multifamily and apartments all need to provide the same parking, two spaces per dwelling. So whether you have a 4,000 square foot house or a 400 square foot apartment, you shall have to provide two parking units, two parking spaces per unit. And the current standards, I think, work well for the single and duplex housings, but they do not reflect the reduced need for present parking requirements for apartments. So taking a look at our code and taking a look at what others do and standards, within our code, we do have some flexibility presently within the downtown that we can do a proof of parking study. This is based upon having a mixed use or having shared parkings between different types of uses. For example, residential uses have different peak period times than the retail does, so you don't need to provide all this parking, you could share some of it. Reason I bring that up is there's two studies that are, that are cited within our code to look at, or two sources in determining parking standards. One is the Institute of Transportation Engineers, ITE. The other one is the Urban Land Institute. So we look at these two studies to determine what really is the need for parking. When you take a look at industry standards for both of those, you find that they're less than two parking spaces per unit when you take a look at apartments. ULI has it at 1.5 parking spaces a unit, which means that if you have an apartment, you would need to provide one and a half spaces for each apartment within your overall parking. ITE has a little bit less at 1.2 parking spaces per unit. Also done some investigation and looking around at other communities, kind of a mixed bag. You've got a lot of communities that are similar to us, some that have a little higher requirement, but there's a handful of communities as well, that do have lower requirements on it, like Northfield and Stillwater and Burnsville, in which they do have reduced parking standards for apartment, recognizing that reduced need in there as well. We take a look at some of these downtown projects that we've done in their, in their parking standards. Look back at art space. Art space did a little over one and a half. They have 1.56 parking spaces per unit. The Seawood Apartment Project that we approved last year was down to 1.4. And the Lofts Project that we have coming through by stencil is going to be in the area of 1.2, 1.3. So we have examples in which we've approved, have constructed and are considering parking standards that are less within the downtown area. So my, my suggestion tonight is to take a look at a standard that would be less than two. My suggestion would be a space and a half, so that within apartment units, which would be the multiple family buildings that are, have three or more units within there, that you would need to provide one and a half parking spaces per unit instead of the two units that are present. So that's the proposal, the background that I have before you tonight. Again, this is a discussion item, looking for any direction for future action. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Quick question. So is this, that would, the net effect would push the parking on the city streets more than by reducing it from two to 1.5?
Mr. Chair, I think it's more a recognition of the, of the need generated from the unit itself. I mean, it's always interesting when you take a look at, you know, on-street parking versus dedicated off-street parking. We never, within our parking code, we, we kind of just ignore that parking on streets is available. It's not counted as part of any of the parking requirements, but it's used for overflow if needed.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Romans?
John, a couple of quick questions on this one. Is there a way that we can look at this, I know it's more complicated, but in a per-bedroom issue, you know, a one-bedroom apartment probably only needs, you know, one space on there. But if you're at a two to three-bedroom household, you're looking at at least probably two adults living there, you know, while transportation is kind of on its way. Hastings doesn't have the greatest public transportation yet, that way, I'll put it that way. So if they're both working people living there, more than likely, they have two different, two vehicles. So if you're looking at a bunch of, an apartment building, much one bedrooms, yeah, you don't, I don't, I don't think there's a need for two spaces for that. But if you're looking at a family or even a roommate situation, then you're looking at probably two plus. I guess it'd be kind of interesting to see how many registered automobiles are there in Hastings now for, for like working groups or something like that, what that number would be, just to see. I, yeah, in Minneapolis, I could definitely see you're under, probably under a car per unit, but Hastings seems, I don't know, not quite that accessible yet.
Thank you, Commissioner Romans. I've seen that done where the parking has been done on a per-room basis as well on that. It's something else to stay here, and I just completely lost my, lost track of my thoughts on that one. But yeah, when you're looking at an urban area like Minneapolis or St. Paul, where you've got public transit that's prevalent, I mean, you, you see those areas going in much less because a lot of people are utilizing public transit within apartment buildings. A situation like Hastings where you don't have a lot of that, it's a little bit different.
Thanks, John.
No, I think that's a good point about the public transportation, definitely. Commissioner Peters?
One of the questions I had with some of the reduced parking requirement areas that have been approved, I know that some of them haven't, they're not finished yet, but for the ones that are, like the art space, is there adequate parking with the 1.4, whatever that ended up being? Is there enough parking there? You know, what, what are we seeing currently?
Sure, Commissioner. We have done a downtown parking study over the last few years that we've evaluated parking as a whole on various properties. And taking a look at the art space property in particular, we have not noted any shortages
Okay, thanks, John. Commissioner Taiken?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I got a few questions, John. Has somebody asked us to do this, or is there something we're being proactive about?
Little bit of both. I keep getting asked the question from apartment developers and that have hypothetical projects and frankly, have got a project coming up in the near future that is looking at, at a reduction that's not within the downtown area. So it's a common question that gets brought up. When we've been dealing with these downtown apartments, I already have a mechanism to deal with it. But when you take a look, you know, our downtown's different from a lot of other downtowns in which you have much more walkability and transit universally. So, you know, the standards that we develop within the downtown in the, the use of vehicles is probably not that much different than on outer fringes of the city as well.
So do we know if any apartment buildings in Hastings, you know, have permit, permitted parking or they regulate their parking somehow? I mean, can we ask them what their typical, how full their lots typically are?
Don't have anything universally as far as other apartment buildings within this, within the city itself. Just kind of hypothetically looking at the different studies that I referenced earlier. When you, I, when you take a look at parking lots in general, you know, for larger apartment buildings, I don't tend to see an issue where you see a lot of overfull parking on streets.
Yeah, so I'm against large parking lots. I hate them. I think we overbuild our parking quite a bit for a few days of the year, mainly in retail. My concern would be if these apartment buildings are near residential streets and the overflow impacts, you know, flowing into R1 District. But if we're looking at apartment buildings that are set, set away where there's really limited impact to the neighborhood, I think I would be, you know, looking, I could see going down from the two down to something smaller, but I think it's a great point. It's kind of a balancing act that we got to do and so that's my thoughts. Thanks, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, Commissioner Taiken. All good points. Commissioner Hallberg?
So, John, has there been any discussion about if we do lower the number to like a 1.4, that we follow kind of a little bit of the Burnsville model where they have the addition of the guest parking as well? Maybe this is a way to make up some of that? So we, we go with the 1.4, but, you know, another 0.25 for guest parking for every, you know, two apartments, whatever the case might be. I don't know what the formula is, but one way to kind of lower the, the main requirement, but to still keep enough viable options for people to park?
Yeah, I, we could do it that way. I kind of like the simplicity of having just one standard and not having another addition for, for guest parking on there. But, you know, that's certainly an option on, on a way to go.
Okay, thanks, John.
Thanks, Commissioner Hallberg. Commissioners, any other discussion? Again, this is just discussion tonight. We're not taking any formal action. We have time to think about it. Commissioner Taiken?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Was this, was this limited or what's the lowest size this, this could be applicable to?
The lowest size? I guess I don't follow the question.
Like, how many unit apartment buildings does this apply to?
Oh, got it. This would be three.
So three, three units?
Three units, yeah. So any, any building with three units or more would be bound by these standards as suggested.
So thinking about that, I might have, you know, a little bit of objection to going down below the two. If it's just three units and we got six spots right now, there's really not a lot of buffer. If it's a, you know, a 50-unit building, there's a lot of buffer built into that. So maybe if we did a, you know, a 10 or some other number saying this is, anything above this, then you go down to the 1.5, but anything below that, we stay with two. I think that may make a little more sense and help ease some of the congestion or requirements. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Taiken, yeah, it's more like what I think what Cottage Grove has, is what you're looking at, a graduated increase, where they have two per unit and then additional 1.5 for every additional 10 units. Yeah, like a graduated approach. Okay, good. Commissioners, any other discussion?
Oh, we also have, Commissioner LeBrun's raised his hand here, too.
Oh, okay, I cannot see it. Oh, there we go. I see the yellow hand. All right, Commissioner LeBrun, go ahead.
Yeah, sorry about that. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I had a trouble finding that. Yeah, so as I'm listening to the discussion, I think it's all really good. I like the direction, you know, kind of the discussion point that we started from the fact that, you know, it's hard to say numbers-wise. I know there's some older, smaller apartment buildings, some of the courtyard buildings kind of on 18th or like around Pine Street. I don't know what their size are, but I think, I think they're maybe like fourplexes and they don't have a ton of parking, but I don't know if there's ever been any issues. So I always like to, I guess the, the way I would like to think about it is something that's applicable to Hastings. So for, if there's a existing condition somewhere that's been built in the past that's functioning just fine, I get the hypotheticals and the, you know, maybe a little bit of hand wringing about some overflow, but if there's something that we can actually, you know, stake a claim to that works, I think that's always better. And I wonder, John, if there's a way we can maybe get some other data from the other end. So I hear a lot of, and again, it's good, they're valid concerns, you know, Hastings is not Minneapolis or St. Paul with, you know, public transit and a bus that's going to pick you up at the door yet, right? But I wonder if there's a way we could kind of get some sort of depiction of, you know, what two spaces versus one, one and a half or 1.4 spaces does, maybe from a land use perspective, you know, the amount of space that that actually takes up and with drive lanes and access and everything. And it may be a little too into the weeds and too specific on a case-by-case basis, but if there's a way we could get maybe a depiction of, I don't know, per unit or floor area, maybe an idea of the cost, that, something that we're, I guess the concern that I see with keeping a higher or, you know, increasing a parking minimum is that, you know, what are we leaving on the table? What are we missing by forcing a developer that's looking to come into town to build extra spaces that are going to go unused for, you know, 90% of their life or something? So I wonder if there's a way we can kind of see some data on that.
Yeah, I can do that.
If that makes sense.
All right, thank you. You disappeared on me. I apologize. Were you, were you finished?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay, all right, thanks, Commissioner LeBrun. Appreciate it. All right. Commissioners, any other discussion? Oh, Commissioner Peters?
So if this were approved, I think about some of the more recent projects that we've discussed that haven't been built yet. So if we would reduce the number of parking spaces required, would those projects that are not yet finished, would they be able to modify their plan and reduce the parking? I just think about the really big parking lots that are for the, the development, like off of 47, the senior, the senior one. You know, would they be able to reduce the parking lot, the hard surface and have, you know, grass or green space? Would there be an option for that or is it only from the point that the change is made forward?
A good question, Commissioner. Since those plans were already approved, their, their, you know, their site plans have been set up with these number of spaces. If the, the number changes, I suppose that they'd be eligible, yeah.
I'm sorry, you said they'd be what?
I think they would be, we, we, they'd be eligible for reduction if we, if we change the ordinance requirements unless there was something specific within the resolution that said they had to provide this money, which I, I don't think there is.
Okay. But they, okay, but they wouldn't be forced to do something they weren't prepared for?
Right, right. I think they would have the option, because I don't think that we specify that they have to provide so many parking spaces. So it would really be a potential ordinance change. You could build less if you choose to do so or not. As I think about this more, with that specific project, I don't think that would fall under what we're doing now, because we do have specific requirements for senior housing that are different and smaller. I think with senior housing, I think it's a, something like a space per unit.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioners, any other discussion, questions?
I got Commissioner LeBrun.
Yeah, thank you. Oh, yep, thank you. Yeah, so I guess I just kind of, you know, the good discussion on all of this and I, you know, tend to, tend to agree with the, at least looking at decrease in some of the minimums. And I think one of the other commissioners alluded to the fact that, you know, I think we kind of in all, all innately know that parking in certain areas is kind of overbuilt. And it, I just wonder, you know, I think it's something that, you know, we should probably keep talking about as we move forward and, you know, just some of the other effects, like the fact that, you know, I wonder if every space that we require is maybe units or, or floor area. you know, I wonder if every space that we require is maybe units or, or floor area or maybe another entire development that could go on a lot of a certain size, right? So even, even for commercial, maybe some of the, the large, you know, grossly underutilized lots that we see around town could possibly be, you know, used in the future.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, any other discussion? Okay, if we have no other discussion, we will go ahead and just move on.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Commissioners, for your comments tonight. So I, that's a good discussion. Got things jotted down here. I'll bring back more information on this one and we'll have further discussion on this one in the future. So the, the, the overall, the overall tone of the discussion I got tonight was this is something that's worth looking into. There's different ways that you might be able to approach this, more information that's necessary. So we'll continue to go down this road and see where it might lead.
Absolutely. Next is other business, John or Justin?
Well, yeah, we haven't met for a month or two here, so wasn't too much that went forward in, in December. We, we do have a few things lining up here for the next meeting already on February 14th. We've got three weeks because of the fifth Monday in January. We'll have a, that NJS development that we spoke of in the TIF District coming forward as a land use application for plat, site plan, rezoning, et cetera. We'll have that one coming forward, I'm fairly certain. We're also taking a look at an apartment project down near County Crossroads near the, the Coburn's and Hardware Store. That would be two apartment buildings, total units, and that would be over 200 altogether. I think that one might also land on the 14th as well. So we'll have those two things coming forward, also some, some ordinance discussion as well at the meeting. So things are, things are moving forward on a development standpoint, so that's, that's good to hear.
Okay, thanks. Commissioners, any other? Nope. All right, if not, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, Commissioner Romans?
I'll second it.
Commissioner Taiken, second. And we'll take a roll call. Commissioner Taiken?
Aye.
Commissioner Matsky?
Aye.
Commissioner Peters?
Aye.
Commissioner Hubbard?
Aye.
Commissioner Romans?
Aye.
And Commissioner LeBrone?
Aye.
And Commissioner Messina, aye. With that, we are adjourned.